Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, July 10th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, go ahead and move through the first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the June 26, 2017 meeting. Do I hear of any changes or revisions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Approve the agenda.
I will second.
We're doing the agenda of the minutes. Oh, yeah, we're doing the minutes, yeah.
I'll then move to approve the minutes.
All right.
So, second?
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, and then moving on to approving tonight's agenda. Do I have any changes? Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved. All right. First public hearing we have tonight is a request for Elevate. A request for guide plan change from CREG SIR to TOD on 2.93 acres. Planned unit development concept review on 2.93 acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on 2.93 acres. Zoning district change from CREG SIR to TODR on 2.93 acres. Site plan review on 2.93 acres. Preliminary plat of two lots into one lot on 2.93 acres. Will the proponent of the project please step forward and state your name and spell it for the city record and walk us through your project? You're welcome.
Thank you. My name is Scott Carlston. I live at 80150 Druxel Court in Eden Prairie. Here on behalf of the Elevate project. And was there other personal information you were looking for there? I think I missed it.
I think that's all.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the staff. The staff's been great. It's been a challenging site to say the least. Staff's been great working with us and it's good to be here. Thank you Planning for taking this summer night out to be here with us. It's obviously important as we proceed down this path. Last time I was here, it was for a project called Martin Blue that I'm very pleasantly proud of and I hope the city is as well. I think it's been good for all of us. Because of that project, Martin Blue is what brought me here today and I just want to give a quick background in how we got to where we are. So with that being said, I know the demand and the city was open-minded to look at more of the studio, some of the smaller units. That's exactly what we did with Martin Blue and that's exactly what was needed. So in a good way, we figured out a new niche. I wanted to keep the young families here. I wanted to keep the young professional here in town rather than having to go live in Uptown. And it's worked out very, very well. And that's what got me to move on to the next project. Then I ran into Mr. Dave Lindell and we talked about this site. This site has a lot of challenges, which I don't want to bore you with and I'll let the engineers and those folks talk about it, but it is the TOD. It's exciting to have light rail coming behind there. It would be very obviously close proximity to the park across the street. But with the challenges, again, we just are working with city staff to get everything in place to push forward. And I looked for a business partner in this transaction and I was fortunate enough to come across Timberland Partners, the friends and family who has been residents of Eden Prairie for many years as well. I've been out here for 20 years, I think they've been out here probably longer than I have. Cass Wilson who specializes in multifamily as well as senior housing. And with that, I guess my goal here is to make a beautiful project that we believe is the gateway to the southwest corridor as it comes down Highway 5, something that's going to look great to take a look at as you're going down there. With that, I'd like to introduce Ryan Seiler, who is the President of Development with Timberland Partners, who will be taking the lead in the project.
Welcome, if you could state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Ryan Seiler. I'm the Vice President of Development for Timberland Partners. And if you'll allow me, I'll give you a little bit of background on the team and the project.
That'd be great, thanks.
Scott did a great job putting these parcels together. The Anchor Bank and the Ruby Tuesday, as you know, has been vacant for quite a while. And I think one of the things that was important to the city was to put together a project here that was cohesive, maybe not do another development with two separate uses, but put something together that takes advantage of the new TOD guiding with the light rail coming and with southwest transit right there. So Scott put the parcels together. He approached us, you know, as Scott stated, the friends and family's been residents of Eden Prairie for quite some time. The site's a great site, we really like Eden Prairie and we put together a team and a project that we hope appeals to the city. Team consists of Timberland Partners. Our role in this development is we're the co-developer-owner and will be the property manager of the project. We've met Scott, who's also a co-developer. Colin Koz is here tonight, who is one of the principals with Koz Wilson Architects, who I've done multiple projects with and known for over 10 years. Civil Site Group is our civil engineer. They've got experience working in Eden Prairie, which especially on this site, given the tough soil conditions, what's going on with the light rail and all the coordination, I think it was important to have that experience. And then Fran Companyz will be our general contractor, who right now is one of the largest multifamily general contractors in the city. A little bit about Timberland Partners. We're a real estate investment and property management firm. We're based in Bloomington, Minnesota, right down the road, 494 and 100, so this is literally in our backyard. We're a private company that was founded in 1992 and we own and manage currently 60 apartment communities totaling over 12,000 units in 12 states. Over 2,800 of those units are in Minnesota with about, with 1,780 of those units being in the Twin Cities. So we've got experience developing, owning and managing apartments. I've personally been involved in the development of over 2,500 housing units totaling more than $360 million in total development. And one of the things I want to stress, and it's at the bottom of the page, but it probably should be at the top of the page, when we look at development or owning projects, we're in it for the long term. So we're not going to build this and sell it off to some, you know, some out-of-town investor who wants to build their portfolio. We're setting this up with 40-year financing. When we look at the operating systems, the materials, the sustainable features, everything we're doing, we're doing it in our minds because we're going to own this thing for the long term. We tend to be long-term hold investors. So we are going to be a neighbor and a fixture in the community. Little bit about the project, and I know you've, I'll had a chance to review your packet, but it's a vertical, vertically integrated TOD mixed-use project. 222 total apartment units. Unit mix broken out there, 64 studios, 96 one-bedroom units, 19 one-plus dens, 38 two-bedrooms and five two-story penthouses. Note about the unit mix, this wasn't just what we thought we could fit on the site. The unit mix, we approached Marquette Advisors, who we trust when it comes to market studies and analysis, and this is what they told us the market demands in Eden Prairie right now. So this was driven by research, not driven by what we just thought would rent. One of the great things, and I think it allows us to take advantage of the TOD nature of the site, is we are going to do some units that are affordable at 50% AMIs. I think that's important because I think when you look at, you only have so many TOD sites in one city and it should be there for everyone to use, no matter what income level. Everyone should have access to transit and affordable housing, so. I talked about the third market study a little bit and we've got sufficient demand according to that study that when it opens in 2019, that we think it's going to absorb about 14 units per month. Which I think is a testament to Eden Prairie and the quality of life here, but I also think it's a product of other than Scott's Martin Blue, there really hasn't been a new construction apartment project built in Eden Prairie for quite some time. So I do think there's a lot of pent-up demand for new product in the city of Eden Prairie. This is a mixed-use project and right now we've programmed 13,266 square feet of, I'll call it, restaurant and retail space on the first floor. Our desired tenant mix, or what we're thinking of when we program these, is potentially two full-service restaurants and then one or two additional retail tenants that complement the residential, but also what's already on the site. When we thought about programming the retail space, I think it was crucial to both our adjacent property owners and to us to do things that work together on the site. Adding more fast casual to that site, I don't think does anybody a favor. I think what's missing over there is maybe a full-service restaurant somewhere you can go after 6:00 PM, as it seems like they've already got the, I'll call it, the lunch crowd, early evening crowd covered. So what we're trying to do is complement the uses there, not duplicate the uses in that retail. And I'll get into cooperation a little further on in the presentation, but we've had extensive conversations with the owners of both those retail strips as we went through the planning of this project. Parking, I know parking and traffic will probably be a big question on the site, it was one of ours too. The site, as it's shown in the plans, will have 397 parking stalls. 287 are contained within a two-and-a-half-story structured parking garage, so it'll be hidden from, hidden from the eye, so to speak. And then we'll have 110 surface stalls also included in the project. Because it's TOD and we really want to promote transit, we're also putting in plenty of bicycle parking. We're providing 175 bicycle parking spaces. Code requires 125, so I think we're trying to go above and beyond to try to promote some multimodal transportation. Quickly on project amenities, we're 500 feet from the newly proposed LRT Greenland Extension Platform. We're obviously adjacent to the Southwest Transit Station. Our connection to Purgatory Creek Park across the street. Colin will get more into that when he talks about design, but what a great amenity for residents, to have transit and recreation that close is, you don't get that with very many sites. We're within one mile of large area employers, including Optum and MTS. We have great proximity to the freeway system, groceries across 212, and then, like I said, recreation. And it'd also be adjacent to a new public plaza at the corner of Technology and Prairie Center Drive that we will construct and maintain in conjunction with the city. Resident amenities, we'll have a two-story resident entrance lobby with package storage. We'll have a rooftop patio with the spa, outdoor kitchen, lounge seating and lawn games. Fitness center with fitness on demand. Rooftop lounge with the kitchen and pub area. Coffee bar, dog spa, dog run, dedicated underground parking. I'm going to touch on some of the things that, from a green, this is something we want to do, we wanted to go on above and beyond in incorporating sustainable elements in our design. So I think these are some green items that you don't see in every apartment project today. We're creating 3,500 square feet of green space on the roof, for a green roof. We're going to put a rainwater system, cistern in the garage and we're going to capture that storm water and use it for site irrigation. We're already participating in the Excel Energy Design Assistance to help them tell us how we can make our building more efficient through use of systems and different materials. Tree trench basins to increase runoff infiltration. Permeable pavers in the parking lot. Low VOC interior finishes and then Energy Star appliances with low-flow plumbing fixtures. I think this slide's pretty powerful and it speaks to the cooperation and engagement that we've had with this project. This wasn't a project that we just brought in, threw on the city's desk and said, hey, we really want to build this. From the minute Scott started this to when we got involved early on, this was spawned out of extensive conversations with city staff. And I really have to compliment them for their input, their patience, their cooperation. There's been a lot of talk about the design of this project and also, you know, with Randy and staff about traffic and engineering and how the flow works with that and how we're going to stage this during construction. So we've talked about a lot of things and their cooperation has been great. Because the LRT is there, the light rail will wrap around us. We've had numerous meetings with the LRT project office, that's also included the city, about project timing, when we're going to get in the ground compared to when they're going to start, how we stage that, how they're going to access the site, how we're going to access the site, how we're all going to work together to make sure we're not tripping over each other. So they've been deeply involved in the discussion as well. Support and permission from the adjacent landowners. As I said, we engaged the adjacent uses early on. That site is governed by a declaration and two of the declarants are Southwest Transit and then Tom Clotier, who owns one of the retail strip centers. To build this project, we had to get written consent from both those parties to do this. They had to consent to an apartment use, which they've done. So we have that in writing and they've been engaged early on in the process for the initial designs. We've incorporated their feedback in everything from parking to what they think the right retail square footage is. So it's been a partnership as far as that goes as well. The watershed, watershed has some pretty strict rules here and there's a lot going on on that site, given LRT's got a plan for their storm water, we've got a plan for ours. We've had multiple meetings with the watershed early on. They've given us guidance on requirements and what they expect and so we've been deeply involved in that process as well. Lastly, we're trying to leverage dollars how we can, so we've been working with Hennepin County and Met Council. Hennepin County gave us a TOD loan. We were successful with that in May. I think it's important to acknowledge that this was the only site on the Green Line Extension that was successful to receive those Green Line, or to receive that TOD loan. So they also see the valuable and the synergies that work with this site. Project schedule, we're hoping to get all our city approvals in August of 2017. After that happens, it has to go to Met Council for the formal comp plan amendment, which potentially would be October 2017. Close on the land and the financing November 2017 and start construction November 2017. That November 2017 date is crucial for us because that is the date, working with the Southwest LRT office, that they've given us, we have to start construction, excavate our site, get the hole dug before they start. Otherwise, if they start their improvements, we come in after them, then we have to shore all their improvements, which makes the project costs skyrocket. So it's pretty imperative to us that we beat them in the ground. And then we expect 100% construction completion in spring of 2019. And with that, I'll turn it over to Colin Koz with Koz Wilson Architects to walk you through the design.
Great, thank you. Thanks and welcome. If you wouldn't mind just restating your name and spelling it for the record?
I will. Good evening Commissioners, my name is Colin Koz of Koz Wilson Architects, C-O-L-L-I-N-K-A-A-S. Well, thanks for having us. We're excited about this one. Just to walk you through briefly through the design, you guys have the images in the packet. I want to start from just the macro level and maybe work our way in. So this slide shows generally how LRT wraps around the site. And some of the things that we had to do initially was just try to figure out how to fit this scale of a mixed-use building onto the site and integrate well with the commercial space, the parking ramp and the LRT all at once. So, and the fourth piece on that is also the views to the Purgatory Creek Park to the south. So the building is shaped kind of like an inverted Y, trying to capture as many of the views to the south, wrap around the existing parking ramp that's going to be added on to on the other side, and try to maximize the orientation and the visibility of the commercial space that's on the first floor. I'm going to zoom in a little bit here on the next slide. And it's kind of hard to see some of the white letters on the slide, but I'll just kind of point out some of the major design features. So as the light rail bridge goes over Technology Drive, it's about 15 feet over the roadbed and there's a pocket plaza created at the corner of Technology Drive and Prairie Center. And that's really meant to be kind of an orienting spot on the site that gets you into the site as a pedestrian and also creates kind of a focal point for vehicular traffic as they turn into the site from Prairie Center onto Technology. At that same corner is where we intend to have the full-service restaurant that Ryan had talked about. And the full-service restaurant would have some outdoor dining space that's visible at this location as well. So that's shown as the plaza space with the trees around it. And I've got a better picture of that coming up and I'll show that in a second. And then through the pedestrian orientation, we've created this promenade that goes in front of the commercial space. It's a very wide sidewalk, it's habitable, there's benches, there's trees. It's meant to be kind of an urban streetscape and that leads you directly to the Southwest Transit parking ramp and then ultimately into the light rail stop. We showed this slide just so you can capture, you can understand the views that we're trying to capture as we're looking south. So in this rendering of the project, you can see how the retail space has created kind of a strong street edge with nice shade trees for creating that kind of streetscape. And we've got multiple commercial bays, as we've talked about. And then above that is this rooftop patio that becomes an amenity for the residents with some outdoor gathering spaces and activities. And the building kind of recedes beyond that. And you can see just glimpses of the green roof space that we're creating on the top. This is probably a good point to talk about the exterior materials and kind of the concept. We really want to have something that has a classy look on all sides of this building. So as you look at the elevations that are in your packet, you'll see that there isn't one side that's kind of like the backside, that we've downplayed anything. Every side of this, I wish I could call it four-sided architecture, but the building is more than four sides, so you can't use that term, but it's multi-sided, right? And we've put the same level of detail on all sides of the building because this is really seen from all sides. Zooming in a little bit on some smaller renderings, these two images show the kind of pocket plaza space that's created at the base of the light rail bridge, as well as the outdoor dining space that we're trying to create adjacent to that and bring pedestrians through, hoping that they visit the restaurants, the commercial space. Maybe they become a tenant, even better. And then ultimately lead their way through to the light rail stop. A couple more views of the pedestrian promenade that leads in front of the commercial space and then ultimately to the parking ramp and to the light rail stop. We spent some time thinking about what the project looks like at day and night and here's a dusk rendering that shows how we've thought about lighting. It's hard to see, but we do have down and up lights on the facade on multiple sides. We see this as kind of a beacon. You know, part of this transit-oriented development is that this is the last stop on the Green Line as it comes into Eden Prairie. And so we want it to be a focal point as people are coming in, in the evening, as well as during the day.
I will stop there. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer questions on the design.
Any initial questions, Commissioner?
I don't necessarily have a question as opposed to a comment, Mr. Koz. I'm quite familiar with that lot and I just want to commend you on a very aggressive and progressive design for that lot because I know that's not easy.
Thank you.
I'm looking at this and a couple of things, I might as well just ask now, if anyone toss up, has there been any inquiries as far as potential, you know, retail there? Has anyone heard that would be interested? How tough would that be?
I would let Ryan speak to that.
Maybe that would be best directed there. Thank you, Mr. Seiler.
So the brokers we've talked to said the retail demand in Eden Prairie is very high. We're going through the process of broker selection right now, but just from preliminary conversations with them, I think, I don't know what it is right now, but I know at one time the retail occupancy in Eden Prairie was sub 3%. And so being with the TOD and the desirableness of this location, I don't think there's going to be any issues.
Very optimistic.
We're very optimistic.
And if I could just trouble you for one other thing. You have an absorption rate of 14 units per month.
Correct.
I would have guessed higher. Okay, I'm thinking 222 units, 14 per month, about 16 months to totally rent it out?
Well...
Am I reading that right?
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind is we'll pre-lease, so we expect to be about 25% to 30% pre-leased. And then absorb about 14 units per month after that.
Well, one nice feature that you have is that you're setting aside 20% for affordable housing, which means a lot because we've been told by the Met Council by 2020, we're right now 1,869 units. We have to come up with somewhere in their mind. Well, that certainly helps by about 44 right there.
Right, and I think those will actually have a, you know, I think those will have a waiting list perhaps upon opening. And I also think this is a good way to do mixed income, is to do it as an integrated project.
It's good philosophy. Thank you very much.
I had a question. It's an engineering question, perhaps I direct it to you. As you are well aware, several of the commercial sites immediately west of your proposed development had subsidence problems. So I'm wondering what abatement measures, preventative measures you're going to take to address any potential leaning tower effects?
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to pretend I'm an engineer, but we've thought about this pretty extensively. So I think the project's going to have about 400 piles underneath it, so we're going to support it with piles driven approximately 75 to 100 feet down. And then we're also going to support the utilities with piles as well. Because I know some of the issues they had was actually the utility sheared off too. And that's something we want to prevent. So when you talk about site complications as far as site layout, there's also the soil issue and we're very cognizant of it.
Any initial questions before we go to the Planner's Report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, will you be speaking for the city?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, I just wanted to move over to this side so that I can point to some of the visuals as we're talking through some of these issues. So some general background on TOD and LRT in Eden Prairie to help set the stage for this development that we have before us this evening. As you can imagine, the city's been talking about LRT and TOD development associated with it for quite some time, as there's been conversations with the Green Line Extension extending out to Eden Prairie. As you can also imagine, those conversations focus on many different things along the line, one of which is TOD development. And as a part of that collaborative effort between all of the communities along the line, as well as the... line, as well as the project office, there have been multiple meetings where we've talked about issues such as station area design, what do the platforms look like, how do pedestrians move through the spaces? And then also looking at opportunity sites at the TOD station areas, or excuse me, LRT station areas, there's too many acronyms. So, in looking at the Southwest Station site, city staff very quickly came to the conclusion that this is probably the premier opportunity site for TOD development, looking at what the other development sites currently consist of in that area. So, with the bus transit already there, the LRT coming in, the city does really view the opportunity for redevelopment on these particular parcels. In fact, early on, when the city was talking with the project office about locating the parking ramp on the site, there was conversation initially about that parking ramp being on this site. And the, you know, city worked with the project office to relocate that parking ramp to the other side and preserve this very visible opportunity site for redevelopment in this location. As a part of that, there was also conversations about how to move pedestrians from the north side of Highway 5 through this site down to Technology so that they can access the transit, both bus and LRT. And that proved to be quite challenging in talking that through with the project office just because of a variety of conflicting interests and site conditions. So it was determined that the best way to move pedestrians from that north side to the transit would be through the development site. And the developer has been very collaborative with the city in order to accommodate how pedestrians can move through the site. And as I talk later on in my presentation about the plaza and the retail promenade, we'll be discussing that in particular, but I wanted to draw attention to the fact that there have been measures taken in order to provide greater pedestrian access from the north side through this site as well. So those of you who have been on the commission for some time are familiar with some of the broader LRT-related policy documents that have been reviewed by the city council and the planning commission, including the investment framework, which at one point was called the TSAP document, for those of you who might be more familiar with that term, as well as the extensive station area planning that was done for the station areas within Eden Prairie. And the development in general is conforming, is in conformance with those documents as well. So I just wanted to remind you of those conversations. So with the look ahead to TOD development, the city did, in 2016, adopt TOD ordinance regulations. So as you know, because we talked about it many times during that conversation, that established the zoning district regulations. The additional step that needs to occur is to designate properties for TOD development. And with the upcoming Aspire Eden Prairie 2040 Comprehensive Plan, we'll be looking at properties along the line to identify those specific properties for TOD. But with this project, we will need to re-guide comp plan, or the request rather, is to re-guide the property for TOD and re-zone it to TOD residential consistent with those regulations that were adopted in August of 2016. So as a part of the comp plan, re-guiding and comp plan amendment, you'll find in your packet that staff has put together some draft language to address TOD development. And that language is really intended to identify, what does TOD development mean? How should it look? And then we'll be taking a look at which properties should be guided that with the Aspire effort. But with this effort this evening, we wanted to talk about how the Southwest Station site, particularly these two properties, blend with those principles of TOD and why it's appropriate to guide these properties for TOD and re-zone the properties. So as you'll see in your staff report, the TOD comp plan language really talks about that TOD development is ideally situated within half a mile of a transit station. It provides for a high density, intensity of uses, provides for pedestrian connections, gathering spaces such as plazas and other open areas that are welcoming and create an inviting atmosphere, as well as creating just a very vibrant and healthy, active type of living situation for the residents and businesses along that type of development. So, the development that is proposed before you this evening, staff in the staff report has analyzed how this development is consistent with those principles. In addition, I'd like to spend some time talking about the specific site amenities and site improvements. So if you'll human me for a minute while I get the plans ready. Can I have the document camera, please? Thank you. We could zoom in a little bit. So as both Ryan and Colin spoke to in their presentations, the site is bound by Prairie Center Drive as well as Technology, being the major intersection from which both vehicles and pedestrians will take access to the site. As you can see, the LRT line comes in along this line right here. So there's a pier, there's a pier supporting the LRT bridge in this area. The development proposes to construct a very detailed plaza area that would provide for a pedestrian connection for those folks entering off of the intersection and attracting them, drawing them into the site. In addition, the pedestrian area continues further to the west and connects to what they have been calling the retail promenade in front of those commercial areas, which then connects to the existing parking garage. Now, as you know from our conversations with the Southwest Project Office when they were here roughly a year ago, talking about the expanded parking ramp that will be constructed further to the west, those ramps are many times talked about as the existing ramp and the proposed ramp, but those ramps will provide connection. There will be connection between the two, both for vehicles as well as pedestrians in order to get access over to the bus and LRT platforms. So as a part of this development, it will provide that much-needed pedestrian connection from Eden, excuse me, Technology Drive and Prairie Center Drive through the site because it is important to move those folks from the north side and be able to provide a safe route for them to access the transit services. As a part of the plaza area, there are many site amenities that are proposed as a part of that, and there are other slides that we'll get to, but I just wanted to speak to some of the specific amenities. They are proposing to use benches as well as seat walls to create a gathering space. There is public art that is proposed, including statuaries, decorative types of bike racks. So we'll have bike racks that are essentially doing double duty, meeting that bike parking requirement, as well as providing some public art on site. There is the use of decorative surface, whether that's pavement or colored concrete. You will see a variety of textures and materials in the surfaces that are provided in that plaza area, again, to create a very welcoming and energetic feel to that particular area. The retail promenade will provide the opportunity not only to move pedestrians through the site, but there is opportunity for outdoor seating at the restaurant, as some of the previous speakers spoke to. There is a main entrance for the apartment building in the corner in this location. So again, another element of TOD is creating and attracting attention through the use of primary entrances. So there will be an opportunity to create those, not only for the retail and restaurant uses along the street level, but also for the residential uses as well. The developer is requesting a PUD approval. So there are some areas of the code where they are requesting some waivers, six or seven of them, as I believe off the top of my head. So, a couple of the waivers are specific to parking lot design, or parking stall design, rather. One with regard to parking stall length, and one with regard to the width of the drive aisles. So in both cases, they're requesting a waiver to allow them to be one foot less than what is required by code. And both of those measurements are waivers that have been requested and approved in other projects, and the city has found those dimensions to be functional for those types of situations. In addition, they are also seeking a waiver with regard to usable open space on the site. The TOD residential district does require 10% usable open space. And the site, when we calculate it based on the site improvements, provides approximately 8%. And I've got another graphic I'd like to share with you about that. This one is a little bit harder to read, I apologize, but if we zoom in, this graphic will identify the areas that the city has calculated towards the usable open space. So the plaza improvements that are proposed near the LRT pier are actually within the city's right-of-way and off-site. So while they're not included in the calculation to the average user on the property, it certainly will function as if it's met that 10%, because they won't see that invisible property line. It will feel as if it's all one area. The city staff was hesitant to count off-site improvements within the right-of-way towards the usable open space, just with regard to taking a look at future TOD developments in other locations. We were concerned about if we counted it in this particular case, if that set some kind of precedent that we maybe didn't want to set moving forward. So as we calculated the 8% that's provided on site, this area within the public right-of-way is excluded from that. So that's what is really causing the need for the waiver, because as I said, the site will function as if it's met that 10%.
Can I, sorry to interrupt you, but I have had a question, and I think it is appropriate at this point.
Okay.
We're looking to designate this as a TODR site, where to me it seems more appropriate to be a TODMU site, in which case we'd be talking about 7% usable open space, and then it would be conforming use. Why are we talking about TODR when this site is the closest we have to the light rail, which the TODMU, as I understand it, is designed to be, that's where the, I mean, this is the site to me that would be TODMU if we have that designation at all.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in response to that, the TOD mixed-use sub-district and the TODR, or residential, sub-district are very similar with regard to their performance standards, and of course, both allow a mix of uses and have very similar language. The intention behind the request for TOD residential is that out of the entire project that's proposed, 222 residential units are proposed and 13,000 square feet of retail and restaurant use is proposed. So there's a much more significant impact from the residential use than there is from the commercial use. So many times you will see in a mixed-use type of development that there's maybe one or two floors that have a commercial or an office component, so you've got more of a balanced or even more of a heavier leaning towards the office and commercial. So as staff worked with the developer on this, it seemed that the TODR was more appropriate since there's more residential component to this project than there is mixed use. But as I said, the performance standards and the allowances of those sub-districts are very similar.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So back to the usable open space. So the area within the development that was counted towards that 8% usable open space includes the dog park area up in the corner, where the LRT line will curve along behind the back of the building, the retail promenade along the front of the building, because of course that's going to be a corridor to move that pedestrian traffic through, as well as create some active window shopping and gathering places for those folks, as well as the connection along the outdoor seating area of the restaurant and the lawn space, which would provide some further amenities, again, seating walls, benches, public art, and things of that sort. Few of the other waivers that are requested include one for projecting signs. The project proposes two projecting signs, or blade signs if you will, from the building, and that is consistent with what city staff would expect to see with either town center or TOD, more of an urban type of development. And staff is recommending approval of that waiver as well.
Julie, just one question about the usable space.
Yes.
Is the rooftop deck counted as usable space?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, yes, it is counted towards that as well.
Thanks.
I apologize that I missed that. The project, as I said, is a PUD, so there are areas where the project has not only requested waivers, but there are areas where they've exceeded the code requirements. So the applicant spent a bit of time talking about the sustainable features that are included as a part of this development, including the green roof, the reuse of the water, permeable pavers within the parking lot, tree trenches. So all of those elements are design elements that the city really took a hard look at when we recently reviewed our design standards and went through that initiative. And while they're not code requirements, they are certainly part of that menu of design options that are available to developers and that the city encourages use of. In addition, the development goes above and beyond on the bicycle parking requirements. I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, they're exceeding the bike parking requirements by 50 parking stalls. So there's additional opportunity with that, as well as making every effort to provide those pedestrian connections not only to their site, but through their site in order to supplement the transit opportunities farther to the west. The landscaping on site as well far exceeds what city code requires, and again, consistent with those design standard initiatives, there was the inclusion of pollinator and native species, which also then supports the sustainable piece of that as well with regard to water conservation. So, I do have the opportunity to answer any questions that you might have. I would like to also offer that in the staff report, there are conditions of approval that are noted. Staff is recommending, excuse me, approval of the project. I would like to offer that there should be an additional condition added to that list with regard to park dedication payments. So city staff is continuing to work with the developer regarding park dedication payments, and I would recommend that there be a condition added that park, any park dedication payments required would be consistent with final PUD approval, as well as financing plan approved by city council.
Julie, I have a question. It's really secondary to the project, but for pedestrian access from the direction from the east, and we're talking now about hundreds more people injected into this area, and for handicap individuals, for children, safe transit across Technology Drive, which you know is a high-vehicle-density thoroughfare. So is the city looking at doing some kind of bridging structure to allow people to safely move back and forth from this project to the retail centers to the east?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'll take a stab at that, and I assume Mr. Ru will help me out if I get too off-center. So as a part of the LRT project as well, there will certainly be improvements and changes to the site overall, as well as to that intersection of Prairie Center Drive and Technology. Any connections made to those intersections and accesses will need to be ADA compliant in order to ensure that people of all abilities are able to move not only to, but within the site. Specifics, maybe Mr. Ru can speak to if you have specific questions about that.
Sure.
I think Julie answered the question.
Any other questions for Julie?
Yeah, this project is very intriguing and very, very interesting. So to be honest, I'm looking for the downside, and hopefully we don't find any. But historically, this area here's had some parking and traffic flow issues. Can you comment on how the discussions went relative to, you know, access to the structured parking? And, you know, this area was a bit of a mess at one point in time, a number of years ago. And how was that considered or discussed?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as the development team spoke to in their comments, there's been multiple conversations privately between the development team and other property... other properties, the adjacent properties that are impacted by this development and the parking overall on that site. From a city staff level, we are also very cognizant of the fact that there have been concerns out there, particularly through the noon hour, and, you know, as Mr. Siler spoke to that, it's about trying to find uses that complement each other rather than replicate each other in order to help make the parking work. In addition, you know, there was with the Shops at Southwest, that Shops at Southwest Station that was previously just constructed where our Taco and Cafe Zupa is at, there are 40 required parking stalls by private covenant that are required to be provided by this property to that property. So as a part of that parking analysis, when staff went through and identified the parking needs for this project based on the TOD requirements, those 40 stalls were originally counted with the Shops at Southwest. So we did not double count those, if you will. So you'll see in your list of waivers that technically there is a waiver listed for this project because there's six stalls off, but if not for that private parking requirement, they would be exceeding parking by 34 stalls. So we've taken a great measure to try and ensure that we don't have parking concerns there in the future, as well as the parking ramps will be open to the public after 6:00 PM. So there's opportunity for additional parking capacity after those hours.
So just in general, you're comfortable that the parking layout, the parking, the number of stalls and all is sufficient for the use that's now in that area, or will be in the area?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, from a staff level, yes, we are comfortable with that.
Good.
In addition, in your memo, you'll see that there was some comment about access, since you raised that in particular, and staff has been working with the developer as they're taking a look at how the site is accessed, particularly at the corner of the parking ramp, and there's a little S-curve in there. So the developer has committed to, as they're continuing to look at the design of that building, once they have a better understanding of exactly where those pilings, pilings isn't the right word, but I mean, drawing a blank right now is what the right word is that I'm looking for. As they're identifying where those support systems are within the structure, that there might be an opportunity to locate the garage entrance in even a better location than where it's at now. So they are committed to continuing to keep an eye on that and monitor that.
Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, Chairman. Julie, so on the topic of parking, perhaps you can help me, because I'm bad with numbers. Reading through the staff report, I'm getting a variety of numbers that I just want to make sure I'm certain about. So there's 397 parking stalls proposed, 287 in the garage, 110 in the surface. The surface, 110 surface are the shared, those are considered shared?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the 110 surface stalls are provided for the commercial businesses that are onsite. Of that, 40 of those are required by private agreement to be shared for that property to the south, that is, the Shops at Southwest Station. So those folks only have a right to 40 of those, not all 110.
Okay. Because page eight says 36 stalls for public use.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the 36 stalls are within the parking structure.
Okay, that's my next question.
So I forget the total number of parking stalls that are provided within the structure, but 36 of those are available to the public and will be secure from the parking stalls that are provided for the residents of the apartment. So for instance, the residents of the apartment will have a FOB or some other mechanism where they can get access to those stalls that are privately available for those, but as a consumer of the restaurants or retail space, you would have access to 36 of those stalls. Likely, those may be employee parking in order to retain the surface stalls for customers.
Okay, so the 36 comes from the in-garage number?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
If you're not the right person to ask this, fine. So if I'm looking back at my, at the very first map, the Southwest Transit Station pickup is going to be sort of where the current bus pickup is? I mean, conceptual, just sort of need a conceptual concept here.
Yeah.
So it's going to be, it's going to be on to the west of the parking site. It's over there.
I'm just trying to find you a visual here.
There is one. So slightly off-topic, is the pickup section of the station where that currently is, is that going to be expanded?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'll just take a minute to kind of walk through this site plan a little bit.
I'm new here, so.
No, that's okay, and I understand, I appreciate that. So this is the outline of the existing elevated Southwest Station structure that is proposed. Here's the surface parking in front of it with the retail promenade. You can see coming down Technology. This is a main entrance, which would get you into not only the parking for the existing, but the proposed commercial, as well as provide access into the existing parking ramp itself. An additional entrance into the site exists further over here to the west, and this is what will largely serve as the kiss-and-ride or the drop-off area. So if a person is dropping off a passenger for LRT or bus, they would make their way through this intersection, navigate through the site, do the drop-off close to the platform, circle back, and be able to come out. And there's full movement at that intersection, so they can leave the site in either direction.
Okay.
Does that help?
That does, because having lived in a place with mass transit and similarly situated, what tends to happen is people wait, and traffic backs up because people just park and wait for the train that their loved one happens to be on. So the question really becomes, and you're looking at the traffic analysis, is to what extent is traffic backing up because people are waiting and flowing into the other parts of the parking lot, is that a factor in the traffic analysis?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is something that city staff, as well as the project office for Southwest LRT, has spent a considerable amount of time with working through that design in order to figure out what is the maximum design, understanding that there are going to be some folks who are going to want to tend to wait rather than circle or find some short-term parking. So this design has been refined in order to best accommodate those types of uses, and because there is a separate entrance provided further to the west, there is minimal impact that is anticipated with regard to this project and this property that we're talking about this evening.
So one last question on the parking. For the people coming out of the kiss-and-ride section, are they going to be able to make a left-hand turn?
Yes, they would.
Okay, thanks.
So that's different than it is now?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is different. Right now, that is not a full intersection at the west entrance, but it will be as a part of the LRT improvements.
So we expect a light there?
Mr. Chairman, member of the commission, the, this whole site has got a number of things going on, and what's shown here in the graphic that you were looking at a minute ago, that shows some of the LRT improvements. So the parking ramp where the Southwest Station is indicated there, there's a parking ramp above that. So some of that circulation that you're seeing, part of it is the drop-off area, but also part of it is access into the parking ramp, which the two parking ramps will then be connected. And as you can see there, there's a bus station platform and a Southwest Station platform. So they're basically side by side, so you go one side, you get on a train, the other side, you get on a bus. And the bus circulation is within kind of where it is today, but reconfigured. But to kind of get to your question, the entrance that's off of Technology Drive will be a full access, but it will not be signalized. And the Easterly entrance, the one that's currently a full intersection with a signal, there's some improvements that'll be done there as well. There'll be two left turns coming out of there with the Southwest project. So that's part of the Southwest LRT project, will do those improvements. So there's kind of a mixture of improvements going on. Some are part of this proposed project, and some are part of the LRT project. So they're all shown in this graphic, everything's shown together when it's all done, both projects, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. It seems like that would be a difficult intersection to take that left-hand turn without a signal.
Well, based on the numbers that, the traffic studies that were done, it will operate at Level of Service A, I believe, which is the best. So it's really the fact that we're adding another intersection, another full intersection that currently is only a right-in, right-out. So we're providing some relief on the Easterly intersection by, for people going eastbound, for example, will be able to turn into the first entrance rather than to have to go to that, the current entrance, as well as allowing people to turn left out of there if they choose, and certainly turn right, which they can today, is the only movement they can make today. So, and part of the issues too, is you've got a tenant there, or culvers, and that will not be there anymore, and so that, the traffic volume and that use to that site, there's some reductions in some of it because of culvers being gone, and there's some increases overall, but fairly slight increases for the whole site.
What about east-west movement within the parking lot itself? I find even today, driving through the site on the, by the vacant properties, trying to cross over in front of the Southwest parking ramps, existing entrance and exit, that's a difficult intersection to traverse when you're going east and west.
Within the parking ramp, or within the parking lot?
Right in front of the, yeah, right in front of the parking ramp within the parking lot, and I would expect that would be higher volume of traffic with this new development.
Yeah, the biggest problem area on this whole site is that, that area just, if you can maybe point Julie on the graphic, it's right in that area where there's two intersections, there's the ramp volume, or the people going in and out of the ramp, and then you've got the two drive aisles. So in the traffic study, there was some recommendations that could be done to improve some of that by cutting off one of those drive aisles and having just one, that would be a little more efficient, instead of having two that both have to conflict with the vehicles going in and out of the parking ramp. So there is some recommended improvements, but it's really onsite, and it's something that would, could be done now or could be done later, but it's more of an internal circulation issue rather than a public on the roadway. The intersections on Technology Drive, we feel will work very well.
Will that be the same entrance for both ramps then, for public parking?
No, there'll be, you'll be able to get into ramp, the ramp on both, off of both intersections. So the one, the new entrance on the west, you'll be able to get into the parking ramp. That's the kiss, the way she's showing, that's the drop-off area, but if you, if you go to the left there, you can get into the park, to the left. Keep going all the way around the curve, yep, that gets you into the parking ramp, and then from there, you're on, you can cross over into the current ramp.
All right, so it'll be...
So people that are in either ramp, either the new ramp or the existing ramp, will be able to have options to get out either side.
Okay.
Which right now, it's just a one-way in and out in that one spot. More options.
Great, thanks. Julie, I have a question for you.
Certainly.
The waiver about building step-back and visually distinct floors, could you speak to that a little bit, and if there's any concerns from the city's perspective?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, when the TOD ordinance was drafted, there was a requirement included in that that required a building step-back after the fourth floor. And largely, those building step-back requirements are in place in order to address size, scale, massing of a building, as well as to open up airflow, light, those types of things as we start talking about very vertical buildings. So in this particular project, rather than proposing a step-back after the fourth story, a step-back is proposed after the fifth floor. So they've just varied it by one floor. The other architectural waiver that is requested is the TOD ordinance requires a visually distinct first two floors. Because of this project and its first-floor retail component, and then the incorporation of the rooftop deck and the green roof, there's a visual, natural visual distinction between the first floor and all of the other floors above that instead of the second floor. So from a staff perspective, they are meeting the spirit and intent of the ordinance by providing those architectural differences. They're just providing them in a bit of a different location that works for this particular project and the mix of uses as it's proposed.
Good, thank you. Questions for city staff?
Mr. Chair.
I think there's some questions for developers.
Yeah, may I ask just a couple of quick questions of staff before we move on? Actually, the first one, Commissioner Weber was nice enough to take that with the TODR versus TOD mixed-use. I had that same comment, and I think your answer was sufficient, but I certainly, at first blush, thought that the mixed-use category of zoning would be more appropriate than the residential TOD. But as I said before, I'm satisfied, and I appreciate Commissioner Weber bringing that up. Is this project contingent on further funding commitments on the Southwest Rail Project? Another working hand-in-hand with construction, but with the news of maybe some funding dropping out from the federal government, I'm wondering if we are allowed to recommend approval, and is the city council allowed to rezone and re-guide prior to a definite commitment of the Southwest Rail Project going ahead?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the TOD ordinance talks about TOD development near transit facilities. As you're well aware, there's a transit facility there today already. So the fact that bus service is there already lends itself to being appropriate for TOD development. The provision of LRT in the future only enhances that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff?
Thank you, Julie. Would, I think we have a few questions for the developer?
Yes, sorry, thank you. Do you have some questions for the developers? First one's going to be related to parking. Do you have any plans to install electric vehicle charging stations, either in the public side or the residential side?
Plans aren't finalized. I mean, it's something we've been looking at in all our projects right now. So no, I can't tell you that definitely we're going to put in electric charging stations, but we haven't finalized those designs either. So I think it comes down to how many parking stalls are we using up, and how many are reserving for electric cars, and no one really knows what that mix is right now that we're...
Okay, there is a bit of, if you build it, they will come versus hopeful.
I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a you build it and, I don't know if it's a you build it and they will come.
All right, sorry, these are going to be quick questions. There's a discussion here on energy efficiency for the tenants. So the first question about that is, is this going to be a master-meter building, or is each tenant going to have a separate meter?
We're going to separately meter as much as we possibly can within the building.
Okay. So the assumptions of the tenant energy efficiency is just simply that, an assumption that the tenant themselves will avail themselves of Excel or whatever efficiency programs are available?
We also tend to build back some utilities, and what that does is it keeps tenants from thinking it's a free-for-all, and they can leave the water running and the lights on. If they're paying for it, then they're a little bit more cognizant of how they use their energy.
With the assumptions of, so the appliances that they're going to come with are stoves and refrigerators?
Those will be Energy Star-related, so those will come with stoves, refrigerators, full-size washers and dryers.
And will be electric or gas?
Electric.
And the water heaters will be electric or gas?
Colin?
Or is it going to be one big water heater for the whole building?
Correct. It'll be a centralized hot-water system.
Okay. So this is going to be kind of annoying questions, I apologize in advance. So looking over the first-floor public garage map, where is the door shutting off access to the public? Where's the door allowing the public, the residence, the residential access?
Should be to the, on the west side of the property. If Julie can help us out.
So I've got this big pretty map that I had to clear off my dining room tables over here. There's what appears to be a line right about there that says residence parking access. So when we're talking about the FOB entrance, where's that door at? Is this roughly it?
You are correct.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking that question is related to something very simple as garbage. So if the garbage is stuck behind the locked door, for example, how do the commercial customers then get to the locked garbage? Are they going to have their own FOB and have to walk it all the way over there?
Yeah, they will have access to that.
Okay, and are these single bins or these dumpsters?
Dumpsters.
They will be dumpsters. Okay, so you're envisioning how many dumpsters fit in there? Because it says... Cause it says five, but I suspect you're not gonna have five dumpsters.
Yes.
So you'll have three garbage to recycling?
Correct.
Okay. And the garbage truck then will have their own fob access into it as well?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
One other point that I just wanna make on the trash, there are trash chutes through the building, one for recycle and one for trash, so it's separated from up above as well.
And are you envisioning any time in the future composting program?
I don't know, you know, I know Minneapolis, for instance, is already doing it and you're incorporating it in projects, so some of it's also city-driven a little bit.
Last question, I promise, cause I know I'm taking up everyone's time right now, is related to, so the loading dock for deliveries to the commercial, is that gonna be through the, the public portion of the parking garage or is that gonna be in the front of the building?
So what, the retail, both the owners of the retail that is adjacent to us and also the brokers are saying is loading docks, at least for the restaurant and retail uses such as what we're doing here, are kind of obsolete right now. Typically what they're doing is they're pulling up, doing their drop-offs and pulling out. So full-fledged loading docks for this type of retail use isn't warranted right now.
So is that, so when we're thinking about shortening the parking spots, are those, how are they gonna play with, with delivery trucks?
Well, I don't...
Or you can change the, the orientation of these parking spots instead of being vertical or they're gonna be horizontal?
Well, I don't see that, I see the trucks pulling up with their hazards on and doing a quick drop-offs at off-peak. I think if you look at the retail strip centers that are there right now, the deliveries typically come early in the mornings before they're even open and that would be no different for this site.
Okay.
Does city have a comment about that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd also like to note that the waiver for the drive aisle widths and the parking stall dimensions are only for select aisles and parking stalls as noted on the surface parking, so it's not for all of those stalls and aisles. If you take a look at your plans, it does identify those that are 25 versus 24 and those that are 19 versus 18. So it's not just a blanket waiver for every aisle and stall.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes? Can I piggyback onto that line of questioning that Commissioner Villarreal started regarding the trash storage? We noted that the entrance to the parking garage there on level one is just a seven-foot garage door, so I don't think you're gonna get any deliveries inside. Everything's gonna have to be outside. That's food service delivery, waste pickup, recycle pickup, and most importantly, the large moving vans for these two and three-bedroom apartments that are gonna be coming in at the rate of 14 per month, I think the owner said. So there's gonna be a whole lot of large truck traffic that is going to stop in the middle of these drive aisles with their blinkers on. And I, I trust that through your keen management skills that you're gonna put those off-peak like you said, and I think that's the only obvious solution, comma, but gee whiz, it's a big development and there's not a lot of place, places to park many of these vehicles without stopping traffic flow.
Sure.
So I just wanna make sure that that's been really vetted out since you can't fit delivery vehicles or, or moving vans inside the building, out of the aisles.
I think that's a great point and I'm glad you brought it up. I think one of the advantages of us also doing our own property management is we know how that process works and we tend to stage those move-ins. Everyone's got their set hour to move in, move out, and we can stage them so that we don't have 14 people trying to utilize the elevators and moving in all at once. So I can appreciate that comment and I think we will have the ability to address that.
Okay. And then maybe just tagging onto that, staff's recommendation about potentially moving that garage door down further northwest, was it, to another location, has everything to do with that easternmost drive aisle within the transit parking garage is currently bulketed off there at that northeast corner of the parking garage, as you know. Your site plan shows the curb gut remaining, inferring that you're, you're gonna convince someone and I hope staff will, that that'll be reopened?
I don't think we'll have to convince anyone. Our discussions with Southwest Transit, they've, they've offered that in the discussions to open up that entrance to approve circulation.
Okay, okay.
So we have had that discussion.
Without such, that's a long dead end there and there didn't look like there was adequate turnaround space at the end for people hunting for parking stalls at that noontime rushes people like to do in that parking lot. They hunt for stalls by going in loops. I'm one of them, so.
Agreed.
I'll be your customer if I can find a parking space.
Agreed, yeah, that was a key element for us was having that conversation with them about opening that up. So that'll improve circulation drastically.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that whole moving van, delivery truck, garbage recycle truck staging locations was gonna be well managed to avoid those bottlenecks. Thank you.
Any other initial questions, otherwise we'll see if there's any public input? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, if anyone would like to come and speak in favor of or against this project, please step forward. Good evening, if you could state your name and spell for the record, please?
Thank you, Chairman. My name's Jeff Strayed, I live at 15021 Summer Hill Drive. I've been a member of the Southwest Light Rail Transit Committee Advisory Committee and have been following LRT development out here for about 20 years and it has gone on for that long. I applaud the project proposer, the city, Southwest Transit for this very bold and very informed project and I also really appreciate your very learned and perceptive questions here tonight. I'm not gonna say much more except that I will talk about one waiver and I hope you approve it and that's the waiver for green space, that 8% stuff. Let's not forget, this is a very bold, intense, urban-type project in a otherwise potentially derelict space in Eden Prairie. And right across the street are about 10 miles of hiking and rollerblading trails around Purgatory Lake Park and all the way over to Staring Lake Park. So congratulations and I hope you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strayed. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, great. Alright, are there any further discussion from the commission?
Sure, I'll jump in. With the variety of parking interests, including some by covenant and easement, others by tenant space, others by visitors and residents, I'm thinking there will likely be demand for reserved parking signs put up. And a lot of times those are unfortunately after the fact, ad hoc. And I'd like to just plant the seed that maybe those ought to be pre-planned and pre-designed so they don't just get planted with some MINDOT standard steel posts haphazardly at different heights, colors and things like that as demand requires, but rather pre-think that out. One visual clue that may help is you are permeable paver zone that you have on your parcel does not quite but almost covers two rows of parking and that could be a visually distinguishing feature if you were just to expand that slightly, I think it's north and to the east, to get to the next track island, so that that zone could potentially be colored in a manner to distinguish that parking for maybe a particular use or activity that differentiates itself from your neighbor. Because again, when I come to lunch, I'm not sure whose parking stall I'm parking in and I may not even know which restaurant I'm going to wander into at the time. And so that was, that was just maybe, maybe one visual clue that you could use to help distinguish if you needed to some surface parking graphics. The, the restaurants, I'm hoping that even though you talked of the HVAC system for the residential units going with the Excel Energies Design Assist Program, which is fantastic by the way, the retail and the restaurant areas will probably have their own HVAC. I didn't see on the plans where you pre-located the kitchen exhaust risers for either restaurant up through the apartment unit floor plans. I'd encourage you to pre-design those so that they don't end up being sidewalls and stinking up the units and getting grease on the facade and making sure you don't have the rooftop units in the middle of your green roof areas for the other two retailers that are between the two restaurants, so that we can keep the rooftop clutter off those nice green roofs. I thought you did a great job on the facade design, Mr. Cos. I was pleasantly surprised with the use of brick on, on upper levels. I noticed that there wasn't brick on, on the lower level, but rather a concrete block, which you may wanna present that to us at some time during this evening. I'd like to hear your thoughts about the materials. After given further consideration to maybe that concrete block on the lower level, I realized that it would frankly be underneath the shadow of the, of the light rail line itself and probably be a very minor element on the facade that would be noticed with landscaping in front and, and again, being underneath of the light rail, so that didn't disturb me after all. I might have been hoping for some kind of a regional identifier where the main entrance to the apartment complex is. The penthouse towers at the maybe four corners, if I'll call them corners of the building, offer some very nice distinctive rooftop architecture, which I'll commend you for. And I thought maybe that the, that the entrance to the apartment units themselves might have some rising architectural element. You chose a very unique element there with that wood tone cement fiber board, which I thought was very nice. But maybe, maybe that element being a little more grand, tall, lit or otherwise articulated might give a little more focal punch to the corner, cause none of the corners command primary attention. They're all treated similarly, if you know what I mean, in terms of their, their weight My last comments have to do with the Park and Ride parking ramp and how much discussion you've had with them or not. As it's being expanded, I didn't know if that construction type was going to change because it's doubling in size. You may not know that, but I don't know if the project office told you that it was. There's zero lot line there at their north property line, which is not your problem. However, I don't want it to become your problem and if they have to do something different there with a firewall or anything like that because they have open space, pardon me, I just wanted to make sure that the fire separation distances were coordinated between you and them if they needed to come back and ask you for easements or fire separation distance because of their new construction type, because their parking deck is doubling in size. I didn't know if they did the code math yet on their parking garage. See where I'm going with that? Yeah, yeah, okay. And I don't know if they're using your site right now currently for snow dumps and if that's gonna change with their new, new design or not, if you're gonna share snow storage areas or not, just something to put on your, on your list. And the only response maybe I need from you in this line of questioning is whether or not you had pushback from them because of your height, that you're hiding their parking ramp and even though the parking ramp will be extended, their feature corner in the southeast corner with the clock tower has always been a very distinctive feature in our city for a number of years. And, and that'll be mostly visually obscured now with the, the height and, and dense nature of this development and I'm okay with that. But to the extent that any comments have been received from them, if they're gonna change their wayfinding or definition of that parking deck entrance, I'd be curious if you know of that. If not, that's fine, but it's probably worthy of some conversation.
There hasn't been any comments from Southwest Transit regarding the design or blocking the tower.
Okay.
Every conversation's been very positive.
Okay, good. I, I think they're gonna refocus their attention more on the west where this new Kiss and Ride entrance is, which is certainly appropriate. And so this, this entrance is now gonna be turned into a secondary one, so I just wanted to make sure that was, that was the case.
Excuse me, Commissioner, city staff, would you like to?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, city staff has had a conversation with representatives from the project office and with the construction of, or expansion of the parking ramp, the SPO and Southwest Transit will be looking at, re-looking at signage and how that signage package works for the sign, because obviously with entrances changing and additional entrances being provided, they will be certainly revising identification and wayfinding throughout the site.
Great, that, that's fantastic. In general, I'm, I'm very happy with the project. I think this is going to be an asset and a great stepping off point for our TOD districts in our city. I really appreciate the effort on the affordable units. I'm certainly behind the landscaping that you've done and the artwork at the corner, those pocket parks and around the, the intersection for pedestrian improvements. I think that's a noble gesture and you're doing a good job with that. I'm supportive of those blade signs, I think that was one of the waivers. I think that's a nice feature in the building and certainly supportive of design features like that, the lighting on the facade to add some interest at night. So overall, I really give you an A on this and I commend you for your great work. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I kinda piggyback on that? I'd like to just commend the combination, the team of, of the owners, developers and the city. When I, when I looked at this project, it, I, my first impression was it was too good to be true, because it really blends in what, I've been involved in this for 12 years now and it really blends in what, the vision of the city and to see that come to fruition on a project that, that is in a very strategic place and will be kind of a leading project for taking Eden Prairie in a direction we wanna go, I, I just wanna congratulate everybody and, you know, my, I hate to be the skeptic, but I've been trying to think of what, you know, what have we missed in here because it's almost too good to be true and I've concluded I don't think we missed anything. So I, I think it's a great project.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to piggyback that also. What we're looking at going into the future here, what I heard from the developer, the cooperation they got from the planning department and the city in general, hats off to all of you, that's the type of cooperation that we're gonna be needing going forward. Everything's gonna be tough, nothing's gonna fit the little boxes anymore. When I look at waivers like this, I totally expect to see six, maybe 10 going forward in any type of a project. And having that cooperation of misogynist, making it work, I look at Edina, I look at St. Louis Park and the amazing amount of development going on, this has the feel of it. I mean, when I looked at this project, my first inclination was it popped. I don't say that very often. This, this is good. I know that property very well, you're approaching it now before it becomes a real problem in an eyesore, which no one's lining up for that property as far as to do something in it and have it fit like you have it fit with the cooperation you're getting from the city, it's very impressive all the way around. Hats off to you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I just wanted to briefly circle back on the draft comp plan language that is in your staff report. So as I mentioned in my presentation earlier, not only is the request to re-guide the property to TOD, but because the comp plan in 2008, 2009 did not provide language about what is a TOD district or TOD guiding, what does, what are the characteristics, what does it support, staff has now drafted that language. That language, of course, is open to a comment not only from the planning commission, but we've been working with representatives from the Met Council as well, so they have a draft of this and we're working with them to, to fine-tune that. So the language you have before you may be finessed a little bit more, maybe reformatted, moving one paragraph from here to there, and I wanted to make you aware of that as we take your comment as well as Met Council's, that the final version, assuming everything moves forward, may not mirror exactly what's in, what's in your packet this evening. In addition, should you be moving forward with a motion this evening, I would ask that you include in the motion not only amend the comp plan for the guide, guiding on the property, but adopting the draft text language for the comp plan as well.
We're also requesting park dedication payments?
And I, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and I did suggest adding to the list of conditions that any required park dedication payments be consistent with final PUD approval and TIF agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I first of all wanna second everything that my fellow commissioners have said about this project. My comment, both developer and Julie in regard to the draft TOD is, you know, I would like to see, I guess, an explicit calling out for electric vehicle charging infrastructure to support the overall vision of, of the TOD to be more environmentally friendly and sustainable. Right now, while I understand and don't oppose the decreased parking requirement, at the same time, there will be cars coming from somewhere to ride on the light rail one way or the other. And having a sufficient infrastructure to support electric vehicle development, I think will be a really vital component...
development, I think, will be a really vital component of any future plans. And again, to the developer, you have a year and a half, the state has electric vehicle goals, and to the extent you can build it in, as opposed to building it on later, I think that would both save you some time and save you some heartache with the incumbent utility. There are plenty of charging infrastructure companies out there. I'm sure they'd love to work with you and give you a good deal. But I want to make sure that we do include something in here, maybe later on, and some revision to this, about supporting the growth of electric vehicles, as well as the upcoming autonomous vehicle industry that I suspect is coming at some point. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if I could build on that comment, I think that was a very wise concern. There's another strategy that you may be interested in. I have a feeling that the electric vehicle will be a supply and demand for the manager, and they're going to find out that they need to provide it before us telling them that they need to.
Exactly, yeah.
That said, there could be another feature that they may be interested in, and that is the hourly car rental feature. For 222 units, I think there would be plenty of demand for, whether it's our car, or I think there's a few in the Twin Cities that offer that, those maybe electric vehicles or small cars. But just to buy a couple of them and put them in a parking space for residents to rent by the hour would go a long way to keeping people from purchasing their own car and joining me on the road. Commissioner, are you asking for just the City to be cognizant and work with them on that going forward? Are you asking for a specific language in a?
I'm not prepared to propose any specific language, so I don't, I can either, we can either not move, or we can work with Julie and come up with a proposal later on, whichever one is at the leisure of staff.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, staff certainly understands the comment, and we can continue to work with that language and incorporate something to that effect.
Do the project proponents want to just speak to it, just if there's any concerns with that idea?
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, I, with Martin Blue, we had that same issue that had come up. We did put in two electrical feeds for the parking, in the lower-level parking level, and we did have a rental car. We ran a history on the car, and we never rented it one time, which surprised us. I had the hour car. So, yeah, that was after we opened. So, we just did away with that car recently, and the two charging stations are not, I agree, and I think that that is our future, but they, at this point, are not being used at Martin Blue. Thank you.
I wonder aloud that if, at this, where you're not going to have a car necessarily, ideally, you'll have people that are just traveling on the light rail and the bus, because it's right there, so maybe you won't need a car. So, maybe a rental car would work, but...
Sure.
Just different from Martin Blue. All right. Any other comments from the Commission? All right. I'm really in favor of this project as well. Everything that was discussed, the mixed use with restaurants, the density of the green initiatives, the biking, the pedestrians. When we were speaking about TOD two years ago, this is, I can't imagine something much different coming forward than what I envisioned back then. So, I think this is a great project. I really like that you're building it to own it and not to sell it to an investor. It's kind of like a bank that holds mortgage loans for their portfolio, rather than selling investors, who just feel more comfortable about that. So, I think it's a great project as well. So, I'll just add to the other commissioners' thoughts. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
I second that motion.
All those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the guide plan change from C Regional Service to TOD on 3.9 acres, to adopt draft, appropriate draft language, planned unit development concept review on 3.2.2.93 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 2.93 acres, zoning district change from C Regional Service to TOD R on 2.93 acres, site plan review on 2.93 acres, and preliminary plot of two lots into one lot on 2.93 acres, finalization of park dedication fees, PUD and TIF, and as well as based on plans stamped dated June 30, 2017, and the information included in the staff report dated July 6, 2017.
Second.
Yep, he did.
I have that in there. All right. I have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? All right, project passes. Good luck. It's a very exciting project. Thank you for all your efforts. All right, moving on. That was the only public hearing for this evening. Do we have a planners' report this evening?
Mr. Chair, not this evening.
Any members report? Continuing business? New business? Entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor adjourned?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.